Our caller, uh, meeting's over and welcome all our guests tonight. We certainly glad that you're here. We've got several things on the agenda. I want you to know we're prepared to come at this time. West End Door, please, please. And Mr. Ray, do you want to make some comments?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, at this time, I'd like Pastor Roger Smith to give a brief...
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to gather together tonight. We thank you for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We thank you for those that have helped secure it and those who defended it. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to participate in the government of our communities. We thank you for our leaders. We ask for your leadership and guidance and decisions that they made, and we ask that you would give them courage in the actions that they take. Watch over us, Heavenly Father, as the citizens of the community. Help us to realize that we are a very important part of the solutions to any problems that we might have. We thank you for this community. We thank you for those that are a part of it, and we ask always that you would be with those less fortunate. Again, we ask for your leadership and guidance over this meeting and for the safe return home to all those who are here. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
At this time, we have a public hearing for comments regarding Walmart's application to retail beer and retail table wine on premises only. And also, stock market's request for a beer and retail table wine on premises only. Is there any comments about beer in these two pieces? This is, the stock market is out in west and coming toward Hamilton on the right. Comment, Mr. Phil, five. All right, I'm swearing, this, the next thing we have is a swearing in for, for the police chief, Ronnie Vickery, people in common, and ask him why how to do swearing in.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I support the Constitution of the State of Alabama?
That I support the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof?
So long as I continue a citizen thereof?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And that I will?
That I will.
Faithfully and honestly?
Faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties of the police chief of the City of Hamilton?
Discharge the duties of the police chief of the City of Hamilton?
Upon which I am about to enter.
About, which I'm, upon which I'm about to enter?
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Excellent. Thank you, sir. Do I have the inside? At this time, we have the recommendation to approve in November fifth, 2012 minutes, and November seventh, 2012, special call meeting. Have most approve those minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Down second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Next is recommendation to approve resolution number 2012-11-19. This is Walmart, this is, whereas Walmart stores located 7006 Military Street, Hamilton, Alabama, has applied for legal license for the sale of alcohol retail beer, all premises only, and no set of no retail table wine, all premises only. Whereas Walmart Stores East has met all requirements, has set forth the ordinance of such license. Now, it therefore resolved by the city council of the City of Hamilton, Alabama, that the City of Hamilton grants its consent to approval to this issuance of such licenses, subject to laws, regulations, and such licenses, approved this day, nineteenth, day of November twelve. Is there a recommendation? Is there a second? Okay. Is there any discussion? All right, recommendation to approve resolution number 2012-11-19 two. This is, whereas CFC Properties, the stock market located 4915 Baxter Avenue West, Hamilton, Alabama, has applied for legal license for the sale of alcohol retail beer, all premises only, retail table wine, all premises only. Whereas CFC Properties has met all requirements, has set forth the ordinance of the issue of such license. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the city council of Hamilton, Alabama, that the City of Hamilton grants its consent to an approval of the issuance of such license, subject to laws, regulations, and such licenses. Is there a recommendation? How much more? Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
There is, um, some speculation that maybe all of the real property owners have not been notified or were not notified, and it's, it's unclear at this time if in fact the property is within the 500 feet or if it is not. So, the ordinance stipulates that they have to be notified at least a week in advance.
And there was, that issue was discussed with the committee and speaking with Mr. Fowler, who gave notice out, and that's part of the recommendation that you got, the reason I made next, is there's confusion with the way that language is written in the ordinance, and it just specifically requires him to give notice to a resident or business that's within that 500 feet by giving copy of said notice to each resident in or business. And Mr. Fowler confirms that he did in fact do that, even though before that, it does mention real property owners, but then when it talks about giving specific notice to be what it says, resident or business. And we believe that he complied with his understanding of that and giving him the benefit of the doubt, and all the property owners out there knew about it regardless, and that's language that we do need to clean up to avoid any future issue with it. But, and I think, but I think he did comply with that specific language.
So, so you guys hear the recommendation that this be approved, is that what you're saying?
But, it was the...
We have the approval of the police committee, I mean, review.
Review committee made that recommendation.
So, up to this point, no one has contested it?
Right.
We need to go on with it or table it for the next one?
That's, that's just, um, he, he believes that he had complied with it in reading the language about giving a copy of said notice to each such resident or business. He did give a copy of notice to the resident or business that was within 500 feet.
Our recommendation would prove it, that's the council.
There were, there was, someone made, made such a, I think, councilperson Williams, that they did not get notice that they own properties that appears to be within 500 feet.
Can you tell me what page it is on?
Sure, it's, it's twenty-five. Part of your consideration of the application would be the effects upon residents, real property owners, and businesses within 500 feet. That would be appropriate thing for y'all to consider, is the real property within 500 feet, to have a notice, that's where the confusion is.
So, you're saying that the real property owner of a customer, the residence, isn't within the 500 feet?
That's, was the interpretation, and I can see where someone just reading that would have that interpretation that says it's been circulated to residents, real property owners, and businesses, but when it tells you about how to do that, it just mentions about giving it to each such resident or business. So, if I'm reading that, I'm thinking, I just gotta have to give specific notice to those residences or businesses that are within 500 feet. In this particular case, it's a, someone that owns property on Century Road, or lives on Century Road, their property extends from Century Road to Baxter Avenue, or I have to say Highway seventy-four, but Highway one doesn't, and it's about twenty-three, twenty-four acres, and they have that sloper that can, that faces Baxter Avenue, and it's a question about whether or not it's within 500 feet of the business that's being licensed. But we received affirmation that all actual residents that live there and businesses that are within 500 feet were notified. It says whether or not it's real property owners notified, that actually lives much further than 500 feet. We can go ahead and move.
And a motion?
We got a motion, second. So, I ask for both at this time, and say, all in favor, say aye. Any votes?
If Scott's sure that that's the way it is?
How did you go?
If Scott's certain, then I say yes, okay.
Okay. Now, what we're gonna tackle is something that Matt clearly said before, Scott, this is a recommendation, which now on the agenda, just slide it right in, right, number four, two oh two dash thirteen, section one seventy-five, recommendation for me consideration of ordinance number 2012 dash thirteen, alcohol, alcohol ordinance to amend, uh, to approve. Now, Scott explained what this is, we have to have unanimous consent to amend it, then to vote on. Okay, tell us what, exactly what we're amending, so this'll be clear when this'll come up again.
Sure, it'll be in order, section one seventy-five, public notice, paragraph B, and it, uh, which, the recommendation would be to take out real property owners altogether and just make it, uh, say, all applicants seeking consent and approval for a license certified to the city, that notice of the application stating the date and time, this to be heard and considered at said, at said public hearing by the city, has been circulated to residents and businesses within 500 feet, property sought to be licensed by leaving a copy of said notice for each such resident or business, or with some person over eighteen years of age at the home of such resident or business, at least one week before the public meeting, at which it is expected to be heard and considered by the city. Clarify that it's just to give notice between, to those people that live or have a business within 500 feet of the licensed premises. Does that make sense?
Later on this agenda, we have, we're gonna have a recommendation for microphones. We approve this tonight, maybe next time we have a meeting, you can hear this. This has been this way for years, but all of a sudden, everybody can hear, and I can understand, and we're, we're gonna fix that. The next meeting we'll have, anyway, if we need to approve this recommendation, we have to send, then vote on, is that right, Scott? To make this clearer.
But if we leave it like it is, or do you think the real property owners have to be notified?
I think if we leave it like it is, there's gonna be confusion as to whether or not they'll be notified. I think it needs to be cleared, one way or the other, either take out real property owners altogether or specifically put in here how they're, they're to be notified. I can notify a resident or business by going to that resident or the business. A lot of times, a real property owner, you know, may be like a timber company, or it may be someone that lives out of state and just owns a property, and we could just go up to them without to specify certified mail or some mechanism to notify them. So, I think the easier way would be just to take real property owners out altogether, but if we keep it in there, then we need to also put in there that you have to give notice that real property owner, and by certified mail, for instance.
Well, I think everybody that's within the 500 feet needs to be notified, real property house or not.
Not for everyone.
I mean, that's their property, and it's within 500 feet, they have a right to know what's happening within 500 feet.
Well, after that all being said, have they not known about this? There's no one here to contest?
No, but in the future, if real property owners aren't notified and say, I own a block of land, and I'm gonna, it's residential, and I'm gonna come back here in twenty years and milled a house, and I didn't know that there's a alcohol being sold less than 500 feet, you know, I'd probably wanna know what was going on next to my property before I decided to build a house there.
Have you made your fix?
And that's perfectly fine, I mean, we could do it, but I think we need to clarify that, if, if that is the way that y'all want that to be, to specifically designate, when they give out such notice, to give it to the real property owners by certified mail, for instance. No, I mean, I mean, it's, it's a consideration, remember?
Right. I mean, they can't stop it, these people tonight can't stop it, but it's...
But, I mean, it's, that's part of the consideration that y'all have in this ordinance, is the effect on the people around there, and that is one of the issues y'all have as real property owners. Y'all have that in the ordinance to consider their understanding, and, so, even if they come, it's, you know, they have a perfect position to come here and make their case, that doesn't mean that, you know, you're all, you're gonna do exactly what someone says, but at least it's a consideration. But I think if we go forward on section one seventy-five, public notice B, we need to specifically say to give notice to real property owners, and how to do that.
So, right now, you need to make it consideration to amend it?
To amend it.
And then we'll decide how we're gonna amend it in a few minutes.
Right, well, I would say, you know, you need to know how you're gonna do it, and I would say that you would wanna amend that second paragraph to say about leaving a copy of said notice, each such resident or business, or some person over eighteen years of age at the home of such resident or business, or by certified mail to any real property owner, at least one week in advance.
That would be better. I'll go along with that. All right, we're gonna have unanimous consent, we all need, I need a motion, create a cigarette or something, give me a, give me a second. All in favor, say aye. Now, we vote to amend, is that right, Scott?
That's correct.
Or the motion to amend.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. About a second. Is there any other discussion?
This is where real property, certified mail, that's...
I'll make, uh, I think it make it clear for the ordinance.
Now, Tim raised his hand a little late, but you voted before that.
And next is recommendation to approve resolution 2012-11-19, free authorization of engineer for the CDG, uh, VG project, downtown revitalization project. They had it open in this room at ten o'clock, Goodwood Mills, K Wood, just all the engineers that submitted and proposed, and so, they might have got, so, and whoever else got something. Everything, sir, we've got to see if there's only one second, there's seven, right? So, is there a motion to approve there, engineer on the project? Is there a second? Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Next, and this is number five, recommendation to approve purchasing acoustic equipment for Pro Acoustics USA, twenty-five hundred and forty-seven dollars. This is gonna be a, a microphone system, each one of us will have a microphone, and Jan and Scott will share a microphone, and we'll have a cordless wireless over there at the podium. So, when somebody comes to address the council, y'all be here, and each one of us speaks, everyone can hear. It's been something that needs to be done for years, 'cause I got a soft voice, so I'm capable of this. That way, y'all can hear. If that's not enough, we do have another option, I'm putting speakers down on the side, at least three on the side, with a soundboard, which costs a little more. This is what I want to recommend to start with, you know, I think it'll be good for us, for everybody to be able to hear, 'cause sometimes you're sitting back, you can't hear, I understand.
So, there won't be no installation of this?
No, we're putting ourselves, Baron, you're...
This is just for equipment, only this equipment?
But it's not gonna be lost and installed.
Where's this company at?
Ms. Baron? Baron and Matt McCracken are the sound system at their church in Southampton, and they got this from their contacts. Which I saw, and it's a good system. I think it'd be really well for us to have it. Any discussion? Have a motion to approve this recommendation? Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Next is recommendation to approve one-time paid increase based on seniority employees. This is, um, longevity pay, and this is what we've been doing for about sixteen years. Jan, can you explain anything, whether they might not know?
Probably not within sixteen, but, but exactly, exactly, probably, probably so.
We did it a long time?
It's a one-time pay based on amount of years of service, uh, I think, you have to buy years, it's a hundred dollars, it goes to, have to buy fifteen years, and yours about, in Port town, but less than a year, fifteen. This budget, do you...
It is a budget, eight years, they're budgeting forward. So, I have a recommendation to approve this?
I'll make a motion.
Now, a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Next is recommendation to approve advertising for a part-time police clerk, clerk in the police department. We had a lady that was working there for several months, maybe long, worked with Kathy, and she got a job, full-time job, C I S, and all they're doing is just advertising to replace her, and it'd be better to go ahead and advertise and get, get a person in to help Kathy, she needs a lot of help, she's been, she's been thirty-five years part of the police department, she needs help, and this is just to be a part of the job to help her. Is there a motion to approve? All we're doing at this time is advertising for the job. Is there a second? Is there any discussion?
Eighty hours, this would just be nineteen, nineteen hours.
Anything over ninety hours is considered, not four hours, you gotta do the timer.
Well, it can still be considered part-time, but if they work over nineteen hours, you're required to play the timer.
So, we need to leave it at nineteen at this time?
If that's, you know, you don't blame the dollar.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Next is a recommendation to approve the Marion County Drug Task Force, City of Hamilton's pro rate share, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. This is for the drug task force that was gonna be in the last administration, but they wanted some more information, remember, Frank? Get some ideas, connect to some facts and figures. At this time, I ask the chief of Vickery to come and address us with this, they can give you an order, 'cause he's been over the drug task force for a year.
I know, I bet.
No, hadn't, hadn't. Just asked to...
Oh, the stats.
The stats.
No, I don't think that, too.
Okay, we'll go with something that has to come right back. While he's getting that, let's go to the... Next is, uh, let's see. Next is reading consideration of ordinance number 2012 dash fifteen. This is, uh, recommendation to approve petition of the Oaks Lodge, so I'm gonna give Scott Bigwood. Do you have your paperwork back, Scott?
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm Marion County Oaks Lodge, presented a petition for annexation to the city, and I reviewed that, uh, the petition, it's got petition, it's got property description, it's got a, uh, the property seeking to be annexed. It's along Country Club Road, High School, I'm not sure if anybody aware where it is. It's adjacent to a property that is within the city limits of Hamilton, and they're seeking to approve what would be annexed into the city. It's one of those areas where, if you look on our city map, where we have some gaps, if you draw a circle around it, outside of the city limits, there's portions inside of that outside circle that are not within the city, and this would be one of those gap fillers, uh, to, uh, add them in.
So, the city limits area is, is around it, but they're just not in?
That's correct.
They won't be in the city.
That's right.
We service them already with water, garden?
How big is your piece of property, Scott?
It's five acres.
Five acres. So, we have to, you managed to send the vote on action, let them in?
That's correct.
First thing you do is have due consideration, and the second, we vote an action, you approve or disapprove, is that right?
That's great, that's right.
All right, the motion for big recommend me consideration ordinance number 2012 dash fifteen. Have a motion to do that? We have a second. I mean, I'm sorry. We have a second. Any discussion on this before we go to the next hour? Okay, all in favor for a consider, me consideration? Next would be actually letting them, helping them to come into city limits. So the recommendation to approve ordinance number two thousand twelve dash fifteen petition of annexation for Health Lodge. Would you be a motion to approve this recommendation? Is there a second?
I'll say.
Is there any discussion on this before we vote?
Yes, now, when they come in, they will come in as an R one residential, correct?
And they will have to go to the planning commission.
After they're in. But it's, when they come in, they will be R one.
Just, they'll have to go to the planning commission to be zoned.
Right.
So load them in city limits and then they'll have to go zoning board, get re-zoned.
Become zoned, right.
Become, right.
They'll make this petition with the planning commission to be zoned and they'll be zoned accordingly.
What zoning, zoning, what's the... What zoning do they, about all run?
B two or three, I think. Is there a motion? We got a motion to second. Is there any other discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Next would be a recommendation to make consideration of ordinance number two thousand twelve dash sixteen. This would be annexation of Moore Shell Station, East of Town. This would be the same way, have you managed consent to consider voting them into the city ordinance. So they recommend to consider. Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion on this before we vote?
These two got property at the... Number seven exit. Have you, have you got property on the Fox Crosses?
Which, which exit?
Seven.
You have a western?
Yes.
I do.
Is that gonna be brought in city limits office?
We spend the money, build a store. We'll, that's up to y'all, I guess, but we'll, it'll be an option.
Well, we tried to get y'all to come in years ago out of Sugar Bay. Twenty years ago, I guess. We've been working that area out there for almost year, six, for years. Just getting half the revenue, but, you know, come in.
We had any issues out there. We had called Sheriff's Department, not the police, so...
Well, we thought we went out there work break-ins years ago. I know for a fact.
Yeah.
I think we don't take any of the property we need to get it all at one time.
Yeah, this not on this particularly. We get voting asked to consider and then vote on the next one. This is all considering voting for the, you know, the Shell Station. Have you managed consent, so they consider voting on the next one? It's up to y'all.
It's not a hundred percent tonight. It comes up next.
If we don't have an ass consent tonight, then we can vote on it.
On the next meeting, no?
The next meeting without the ass consent.
Well, I'd just like to see you bring both property if you're gonna come in, in the city limits. I mean, I know we tried.
I'm not sure seven's in or out, I should be honest with you.
We was told years ago that both pieces of property wasn't in city limits.
Are you on the left side going out of western, Kevin?
Yes, ma'am.
The problem, why it's property there on the left side of Fox Cross?
I don't, I don't know about that. It's, it's the, it's a lot. It's got like racks around behind it. Things built. We've had it since I was in high school. I don't know if the city limits are not being honest with you.
And it may be now. I don't know.
I don't, you know, personally, whether we did or didn't, or whatever we did in the past, you know, that's one thing. I didn't have anything to do with it. And basically now, it's, you know, either you want us to come in, you want extra revenue, or you don't.
I think we wanted extra revenue years ago.
What?
And y'all weren't willing to come in.
Yeah, they are now. Twenty years ago, I was in high school.
I understand. Yeah, I understand.
So, you know. It's one of those times, you did second. You know, do what you gotta do, so.
We got a motion to second. Any discussion for me to consider?
Did you get a motion to second?
Yeah, Frank just made the motion. Greg, second. All in favor for this consideration? Say aye.
No.
We can't prove the annexation, but at this time, we'll have to do it the next meeting again to be December third. And we don't have to have a meeting consideration at that time. We just vote yes or no. That's all I have at this time except for... Oh, we gotta go back to Ronnie. I'm sorry. I got something else to add. Chief Bigley?
Mr. Mayor of Council, it'd be my recommendation that we do stay in Drug Task Force. The calendar year two thousand and twelve showed that Hamilton cases were, there were seventy-nine Hamilton cases, cases of arrest. Arrested from cases were thirty-nine arrests with a hundred and one total warrants signed on all of the cases broken down on this list. Meth labs, meth lab dump sites, cleanups were thirty-eight in Hamilton alone. And taking that into consideration within itself, a meth lab, the smallest of a meth lab, would take probably around two thousand dollars to clean up. And some of the largest ones that you can have could be up to twenty thousand dollars. And that would be able to go right back to the city in the event that we do not continue our services with Drug Task Force. And we have no certified cleanup officers with our department at this time. We don't have the setup as far as the container that the, that it's recommended or required by law actually to have to store this stuff. Drug Task Force just paid six thousand dollars the other day for two to be disposed of in Florence where we've had them in dump site regulators. And they were broke down and transported in a closed containment vehicle to Florence. So it cost Drug Task Force six thousand dollars just to do that. That'd be my recommendation. With thirty-eight drug lab sites cleaned up, small and or large, you know, at two thousand dollars apiece, you're looking at seventy-two thousand dollars.
Just in cleaning?
Just in cleaning.
Not counting any others?
Not counting anything else.
So you're asking us to stay with Drug Task Force at this time?
Yes, it is. No, ma'am. As of recently, the City of Winfield's council has voted to pull out of Winfield, I mean, after Drug Task Force. And that would be about a twenty-one, approximately twenty-one thousand dollar deficit immediately starting this year.
So if they have a meth lab, then the Drug Task Force goes in and cleans it up and then builds them? Oh, no, they don't get any services?
They don't get any services.
So they clean it up. Winfield has chosen to go on their own.
Who cleans up theirs then?
Whoever they work.
They have to contract with someone or become certified?
They have to have their own certified cleanup people plus their, their officers. And they have to have their own means of transportation and everything to store it now.
Have you got a breakdown? Who else did this? I know we've been in this a long time. Black County, how much they pay?
The county pays approximately, and these are just off the top of my head. I don't have the figures here. The county pays some, I think, sixty-four thousand dollars. And then Hackleburg, I'm not sure. Bree and Pace fifteen hundred dollars, I believe it is. You and Pace somewhere ten or eleven thousand dollars. We pay about thirty-two thousand dollars. And then the grant, federal grant has matched it. I think it's matched at forty-four percent this year.
It's based on population?
Yes, ma'am.
I think I need support. I don't see how we can afford to do it. We don't have enough power or the capabilities. I do. Until we do, I think we need to continue support. So I'd ask for a motion to approve this pro-raid share. Do you have a second?
Pretty cocked, pretty cocked to break down each particular residence.
Mayor, I would like, before we get...
All in favor, say aye.
Before we get too far along this year, we start doing too much of this, I'd like to get updated on the finances.
We are. Alan is gonna come at the next meeting to have a council.
Give us a budget.
Most of the supervisors has got their budget turned in to Jan. So we'll get a copy of that before the next meeting and then we'll get this budget approved in the next two or three weeks. Before December's, because we're already into the two months.
Everybody's got it turned in, Jan?
I believe I've got them all except the police, of course. Chief Bigley just...
I've got it. We'll get y'all. Also, there's an announcement before we pass a recommendation to adjourn. Says that Hamilton Chamber of Commerce wants to announce the Santa Rosa Square, the Hamilton Christmas Parade. Tonight's meeting is to be December the eighth, Saturday. So it'll be Santa Rosa Square and the jury can meet in Santa on the west side of the courthouse. Also, the choir's Christmas music being performed on the square from three to five noon. We will have one more meeting before, right, December the third. Go ahead and give it to you. Christmas Parade will be at nine o'clock. Lineup will be at four, four P M. With walkers lined up at the Hamilton Middle School and cars floating to the fire park. You know, they go opposite of... Homecoming. Give it out. December the eighth on Saturday. So from three to five, Santa will be there on the square from three to five. Christmas Parade will be at five. Is there any other announcements? Y'all have anything?
Can we talk about this rezoning? We need to do all of that next, put the next thing, put that on the agenda? Well, this is like Steve West on Tuscaloosa.
Yes.
Paying three hundred dollars to get that rezoned and then store it. Been a business there for six, seven, five years.
We're working on that with Marla. I've got a meeting with Marla Shaw Monday. What I'm talking about. We're working on lowering fees for residencials on the building code. Working on the marshal and the zoning fees. It's three, currently three hundred dollars. I hope that's gonna be a lot less pretty quick, especially before first of year we get on to work that.
I've been working on it.
I'm working on with Marla right now. I also wish her a wonderful hacking Thanksgiving this Thursday. Hope you get a chance to spend time with your family. Your traffic, be careful. Roads will be busy. City Hall will be closed Thursday and Friday and the harvest day on Wednesday. So garbage will be picked up Thursday, Fridays, Thursday will be picked up on Wednesday. Fridays garbage will be picked up on Mondays. They're doubling up Wednesday, doubling up Monday. So garbage runs on Thursday or Friday. Thursday will be picked up on Wednesday, Fridays will be picked up on Monday. Anybody else have anything other? Go ahead. Go ahead, Janice.
Okay. I'll get y'all in here. Yeah, I want your help.
What you need?
Well, first of all, y'all can come to my house every morning and I guarantee you, your voice will be better. Because I've learned how to let mine out. I am sick and tired of the cats. And I have begged and begged and begged for help. Now, last year I was told to call the county commission, so I did. Well, they tell me to call over at Wendy's, so I did. She told me to catch the cats. Can't you see this seventy-five-year-old woman out trying to catch cats? I don't think so. Y'all don't pay me to do that. But she's paid to do it. She never came. She never brought a truck. She did absolutely nothing. So if you want your voice trained, come over to my house. I'll help you. You can help me yell at them cats. I've got them about trained now. Every time I open the door, they run. I'm getting real good with a baby gun. But y'all really need to help us with that. I started out with a mother and three babies. Now I've got a mother, a daddy, and three full-grown cats. I've tried everything the co-op's taught. It'll suit me anyway, but it won't fit them. So I just need some help.
I'll just cut the wood, put out traps and try to catch them, but they're not. Like stray dogs.
I think they're stray animals. They'll shoot these traps. If Jan's got a problem with wild cats, they're not hers. But they stay in the water all the time around your house.
Did she give you a reason, Janice, that went there?
I'm sorry.
Did she give you a reason for not coming or did she respond back to you?
Not one bit. Not one I owed her. She said she would have to get some traps and that was it. I've never heard from her. She never called me back. She did not do one thing that you're paying her for.
This is the pound lady?
As far as I'm concerned. Have you heard?
This is the pound lady?
Yes. And this was a long time before her dog got hurt too, so that is not an excuse.
Janice, I'll check on you tomorrow for you. I'll check on you tomorrow for you. I'll be here all day. Okay? Try to find out.
Fine. I'll just get a little bit more practice. We don't need to go.
There you go. Give a little out. Anything? Have a motion to adjourn. One second. All in favor, say aye.